Dirks is here, Fleckner and Roach are not gonna be here, is that right?
I know for Fleckner for sure, I don't know about Roach.
Oh, she was a no as of last week when we planned this.
Okay.
Secor, I don't see him here yet. Teal?
Here.
Hook?
Here.
Hazelton?
Here.
Herpinski?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Zegowitz?
Here.
Wimberg?
Here.
Um, Berlinsky is not here, but Perkins?
Yeah.
Leadburg?
Yeah.
Greenville?
Here.
Lass?
Here.
Goodwin, did I? Okay, I didn't see Jeff.
No, he's, you can't make it tonight.
Okay. Um, Alicia Monks?
Here.
Patil? Sawyer? Sawyer instead?
Sawyer's here, yes.
Okay.
Here.
And then, no one from the Fine Gold Alexander, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. If you wanna start the meeting?
Yeah, um, well, but I've got to hop off it. On my cellphone at, say, seven, so.
Okay.
Um, I can call up the order, but if you want to take over?
Yeah, sure.
We have every plan on this being, every ambition of this being quick, Scott, so.
Right. Okay, so Buffy, that was the call to order in the roll call, right?
Well, not really, I was just taking, so I'll do the call to order now.
Okay, we'll start, then we'll start, um, welcome, uh, to a meeting of the JV Fletcher Library Board Trustees, uh, meeting jointly with the Permanent Town Building Committee and the Library Working Group. This is Wednesday, November thirteenth. Um, please be advised that anything said in the meeting or entered into the chat will become part of the public record as this is being recorded. Can I have a call to order?
Yep, so, Clermont?
Here.
Dirks here, Fleckner, no here, Roach not. Um, Secor? I didn't see him, Teal?
Here.
Hook?
Yeah.
Hazelton?
Here.
Herpinski?
Here.
Patton?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Zegowitz?
Here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, first item is approval of the minutes for the meeting on November sixth. It was a joint meeting.
Move to approve submitted?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Oh, any comments?
Thank you.
Before we move on? Uh, nope, no comments, then let's, let's vote.
Okay, Clermont?
Aye.
Dirks, aye, Fleckner not here, Roach not here, Secor not here, Teal?
Aye.
Hook?
Aye.
Hazelton?
Aye.
Herpinski?
Aye.
Patton?
Aye.
Roberts?
Aye.
Zegowitz?
Aye.
Ten zero zero?
Okay, next is reports. Um, I assume there is no architect report? Anything from OPM?
Uh, the only thing for the architect is this Friday, they're doing their mid DD, um, set, they're going to be issuing that, and once I receive it, I'll be sending a link out to everybody on this meeting and to other groups to review that set. You're welcome to review it and, um, issue comments, whatever. If anybody has questions, you're always welcome to reach out and ask me if anybody has any questions. Um, with the plan, and also it's going, the important part is going to our cost estimator, and our, uh, our estimator is planning to have that estimate done and ready to, a reconciled estimate, ready to send out December twelfth. And, uh, Ellen and I will have to find a date. I had identified the sixteenth to be able to share that and review that estimate with everybody, but now we have planning board, so we'll find a date in there. Try and find, squeeze something in before the, before the holidays get serious to, to be able to review that estimate. Dean?
Um, with, uh, last, at the last meeting, we, we saw a list of requirements from, I don't know if it was the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board, but there were a number of items that might cost money, and it seems as if, if we're already in fifty percent CD, it's getting late to make changes. Are those changes all incorporated at this point?
How, there, if there, they will be included in the estimate, if not literally drawn, that we'll have bullet point to make sure that it's at least accounted for somehow in the estimate, absolutely, that's the intent to capture everything.
Okay.
Um, maybe you wanna report on the shared document, Alicia, um, a number of parties are filling in and preparing the response to the nine-page engineering report, and at this point, and, and the length of that report is one of the reasons we're looking at the planning board on the sixteenth instead of on the second, so, um, I, I just wanna confirm that schedule tonight, and then I will send the request for a continuation of the hearing to that date.
Um, I have asked the, um, Janet, who is the head civil person, that it would be the twentieth, which would be the final deadline to be able to make that submission to, in preparation for the planning board. She has felt that, um, they should be able to make that date for the resubmitting the information, so it looks like that should be on track to be able to meet the sixteenth, as far as I know, but we'll, we'll double check that tomorrow, and we have our, um, design check-in tomorrow, Ellen, to make sure that the, the design team can just double check that for us, but that's my understanding, is they're, they're in good shape to be able to do that. Um, and for the, um, OPM report, so that's the, oh, the other piece of the schedule is that, just about, just before, um, Thanksgiving, we're gonna issue the, post the, um, RFP for the pre-qualification for the contractors to the central register, and that document will be available right after the holiday, I think December second is what we penciled in, so, right now, that's a Mike Edwards' um, desk, he's reviewing it and double checking it, uh, um, you know, with them to, before it goes, gets posted and becomes public, with the idea that the contractor with two free holiday, you know, kind of Thanksgiving and Christmas and New Year's for sure, and some other, you know, obviously, it's a very busy time of year, we're giving them five weeks to be able to do their submissions, yes, that's long, a little bit long, but there's a lot going on with the idea, uh, January sixth, that they would post their responses to their proposals, and that the committee would be able to review them and, uh, publish a list of who in fact is pre-qualified before, um, to go to bid on the twenty-fourth of January. So we have time for all this. Uh, the other, so, that's what's going on there, the other piece that's, again, coming down for the vote, I'll just describe what's going on now, because I'm talking, there are two amendments to Fine Gold's contract, they're gonna, um, be up for a vote later. One is the temporary space. The temporary library that's been set up, it's in a, uh, five fifty Gorton Road, I think, it's a, it's an office building in Westford, and it is, um, a business occupancy, and the fire, the deputy fire chief has asked that, um, the design team's fire protection engineer and electrical engineer go through and make sure it is safe and appropriate, and he's set up, you know, several guidelines he'd like them to meet. So the, um, engineers are going to be going out this Friday and this month, Friday and the following Monday, to be able to go out and do the assessment as requested by the deputy fire chief. So that is, um, an additional service, and then the other piece was also the low voltage additional service that we had talked about, the, the, on the low voltage additional service, if you looked at the scan, we can look at the back if you'd like, when we get to that. In part of our conversation, my conversations in coordination with the design team was, okay, who's got what, who's covering what, to make sure there's no gaps in the low voltage and the wiring and things like that. And it became apparent that the design team did not, they had specifically excluded, um, security and AV from the, their proposal, and the, there was much conversation about, they had been showing the symbols on the drawings for tell data, and I had thought that the, you know, that they should have the tell data, and it should go back to a patch panel in the IT room, so that they, you know, the town's IT folks can just come in and click in to that patch panel. But the design team had assumed that it would be, for lack of a better term, basically, all the, the wires would just be pulled back to the IT room loose, like a loose spaghetti, and not connected to a patch panel, and there was nowhere in their contract or an agreement or in our proposal that said otherwise, so I couldn't, even though that was an assumption, that I think they should have carried it back to a patch panel, there wasn't any way to make them do that, even though, in my opinion, it should be a basic service, my opinion is not their contract. So that is what that additional service is for, if that all makes sense. Does anybody have any questions on all that? I'm happy to answer them, I'm trying to give you an explanation without getting too nitty-gritty, and I'm sorry if I am. Chris?
Sorry, yeah, that was very helpful, I just wanted to make sure I understand, so with respect to the low voltage, it sounded like that there were cable pulls to a central location, but not termination to a patch panel, so i- is that correct?
Yes.
And?
There's different, for, there's different, there's telephone, there's, I'll just share my screen, Chris, as quick as a bunny, Ellen, if I can maybe, um, keep you off or you can share that, okay, let's just zoom in, make my little thing a little bit bigger, I'll share my screen. This is part of your packet, I realize if it's not, you know, it's not fascinating reading to look at this document. Um, but.
I, I guess my question is, i- is this additional service twenty-six thousand dollars to design a patch panel, is that what I heard?
It's patch panel and the schedule, the, um, low voltage schedules, and uh, they're helping, it's no equipment, they're specifying the rack, they're doing the patch panel schedules, uh, they're doing all the, um, um, all the coordinating of all, you know, they owned labeling the.
What is it, what is the schedule?
Just a list of which, which outlets, each outlet will have a number, and it will all be coordinated on the IT rack about which number is what thing, and so everything on here, there was, this is the chart that we had gone through, and the red was that they would provide patch panels, and this is where the, the conversation had started, but.
Does it include testing?
Yes, well, that's not, that's not by the engineers, the engine, the idea is that the, um, contractor will pull all the low voltage so that there's just one person doing it, and that there's a, an outlet in each room, that some, that, you know, just, for example, the computer. Westford's IT folks will come in, place the computer on the desk, plug it into the wall, and at the other end, in the IT room, there's a panel that they'll come plug in the, the server and other pieces, and they do their part, knowing full well that Westford's IT department probably doesn't have a capability or desire to pull CAT six, wide, pull wiring through the building. With the asterisk being that the AV folks, they prefer to pull their own wiring, and we have a site, they're giving us a, a price for that, but that's, that's pulling wires by the contractor.
And they'll have a schedule or a map of what's, what slot is what on the patch panel, okay?
Exactly.
Yeah, sorry, I, I, um, my apologies if I'm still missing something, so, from what I heard from your prior statements, that the running of cable, the cabling within the building was part of the contract?
Hey, the cabling is, is by the contractor, the pulling of the cables is by the contractor.
Uh, and so that's already included in the project budget, is that?
Yes.
Okay, and so then, it just seemed like the last thing was terminating to a patch panel.
And the schedule for it, having organized schedules for all this stuff on the documents.
So it's twenty-six thousand dollars to design a patch panel, and to create a table of outlets and wire numbers?
Uh, there, they describe it as being the, um, low voltage MDF and IDF room designs, equipment racks, patch panels, terminations, low voltage distribution, devices and coordinate, and coordination with the owner's low voltage vendor, architect, and interior design, so they have to coordinate amongst all the team, head-end systems, software, equipment, and connections are by others. That's how they describe their work. And they did give a breakdown of the hours by staff members and who's doing what.
So, the, the reason why I'm just trying to fully understand is that, um.
It's design and CA hours, sorry, construction hours as well, to supervise that the work is done appropriately as well.
Sure, it's just, what I'm having trouble understanding is, how many more of these additional services for pretty fundamental things for a new building are we gonna have with this project? You know, it was, we had radon, now we have network, you know, radon's been an issue for tens of years, network has been around for tens of years. Are, are there other things that are gonna come up, and we're just gonna be, you know, burning hundreds of thousands of dollars with things that are basic?
I certainly hope not, Chris, I, like I said, this has been, oh, um, a lot of back and forth, it's actually, I started that document back in August, going back and forth, having this conversation with them, but they, no, I'm really hoping that we're at the end, but.
Okay, cause it, it almost seems like a bad faith participant in this project that, oh, you want a roof that doesn't leak, well, that costs extra to design, you know? And so I, at, at this point, I'm kind of expecting that, and I don't mean to be a pain in the butt, but it just, it's a bit obnoxious in my perspective. So I'm wondering how much more risk we have here, or is this, is this the end of the craziness?
I, I certainly hope so, I, I tried, I've certainly thought I've asked all the questions and trying to bet all this, there's, we're, we're needing all this, so I, I don't foresee anymore, I don't, I'm not seeing any other change orders coming through.
Okay.
Um, so, additional services, sorry, coming through, other, the two we just reviewed. I'm gonna take everybody from left to right.
Yeah, thank you very much, I'll let others talk, thank you.
Thanks, um, two questions, one, just a clarification, apologize if you, uh, answered this, but all of this AV equipment, um, racking, et cetera, is gonna need power? Have they designed the electrical for all of these devices to plug into?
That's part of it as well, that's in there, that's what they, that's part of all that they need to do as well.
Okay, so there, that's part of what they're saying to design is the electrical accommodations for, okay, and, this is, I'm not a hundred percent confident on this, but I'm pretty sure the building code requires internet and requires phone lines to fire alarm in elevators. And my question would be, that's required for code compliance? So shouldn't they have had some portion of that design in their base contract if it's necessary for code compliance? So if they have to.
To, internet to phone lines and, well, like the elevator line?
Correct, so like, the elevator usually has to have a phone line dedicated to it for elevator recall. Fire alarm usually has to have a backup of some form, I'm not sure what the Westford provision is, if that's a, a radio, or if it's a hard wa- hard line. My question is, if those two things are required, they had to have owned that, if they're saying they provided a code compliant building, they had to have owned some portion of the, the design already. Not saying that, I, I understand what they're saying, okay, we didn't include all this infrastructure, all of that, et cetera. And I'm just more asking, without the firm knowledge of, is there something they already owed us that we're paying for twice?
No, because I agree that that was owed, and by contract, because it is code required, and that it was not what was in dispute.
Okay.
It was the, basically the desk devices and.
What they're calling extra, uh, you know, unnecessary work in their eyes, not, not necessary.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. Tom?
So you said that the AV wants to pull their own, or?
Yes.
And has this, has the rest of this been passed by Westford IT?
Um, we have been talking to them, but Westford IT does, we have had back and forth with them, we're waiting for the AV guys, uh, company, sorry, is going to submit a proposal to us that will include, with the breakout of the cable and all their devices and things like that, so that's not a hundred percent guaranteed, they just expressed their preference for that. So that they have, they would like their guarantees that their system is working as an enclosed AV system. And once we get that proposal, we will certainly review that and vet that with the IT folks, but so far, they have been, um, you know, that they've been on board with the thinking is in terms of, they just wanna be able to come in and plug in.
I'm, I'm trying to determine if it is understood where the building contractor's responsibilities in, and Westford's responsibilities begin. Uh, I'm just concerned that until somebody shows a complete diagram, you know, a patch panel, for example, there's no electric there. If it's a patch panel. So I am confused about what is and what is not being discussed here, and having gone through some of these things in previous lives, it's always a fine distinction about who owns what. And that's why I'm saying, unless there's somebody like from Westford IT who's actively monitoring what's going on here, and has told us, yes, this is complete, this will provide internet. You know, I don't know, you know, we're going to get internet from somebody, there's gonna be routers. I don't know what else, equipment IT or the library is intending to install at the library itself, so I'm, I, this is just a little bit squishy for me.
That's an excellent point, I'll be sure to have IT review the documents for their scope to make sure they feel that it's clear, at least in, in their mind. But the contractor owns no equipment, where the, the contract, the construction contract will own infrastructure, will own a rack, would, and I believe the rack is electrified, but I'll double check that with the engineers, and the patch panels, and the intent has been, I, has been clear on that spreadsheet, is that the town, that the town will be able to come in and plug into that and go with they, with their equipment, with their servers, whatever they need to do, but just.
I, I'm just.
Yep.
I wanna make sure that I can, AT, often the patch panel and the survey equipment and the router stuff is all in the same.
Yep. Excellent point.
So. To me, it's still squishy.
I will review that with IT, that's an excellent point. Uh, uh, James?
Uh, could you reiterate what, uh, was not included? At the, at the bottom of all that, you had a.
What's not included in the documents, or what, I'm sorry, not included in the change order?
In the change order, in all this work, there was something that the bottom, he had about a handful of non-included's.
What, what's not included in the documents or in the BLWs, the engineer's scope of work is the actual equipment, there will be a rack, that's will be included as part of the construction, but like the server or the actual telephones or the actual computers, the equipment is not included in the construction contract, it is included in the budget, but it is not part of the construction contract. And BLW is not specifying the computers or the servers or anything like that.
The hardware.
Or the phone system.
Software, any of that stuff.
Correct.
Is that something that would be coming from the, is that something that can be brought over from the library anyways?
Well, that's what we need to, well, we will be working out with IT, um, as we, yeah, as we move forward, about what is the server need to be, is the, can the phone system move over all those things? That's all, I assume the phone system will be, we assume the phone system will be moving over, but I don't know, you know, is this gonna be an opportunity to get a new server, we haven't gotten into that level of detail, because that's, a lot of those decisions will come towards the end, and a lot of technology things change fairly quickly, so we, we're not gonna commit, uh, for sure, but that's, the, I think, the intent is an awful lot of that can move over, because Ellen's done a great job on keeping stuff current in the library.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I guess I was just curious, who's gonna make that evaluation?
Uh, Ellen will be working with IT and AV and all those guys, to make sure that we have what we need, and it will all work.
We're on the town phone system, we're on the town servers, we collaborate on equipment with IT, they help us replace equipment. We have a free Comcast line for public internet, you know, we have boosters installed by IT and routers for wifi, so we'll, we'll be working hand in hand with IT, and, um, and we have already given them plans, and we've already started more informal talks, but they, they definitely will want to sign off on everything.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Jean?
Uh, two comments, uh, one is, a couple months ago, the Library Working Group asked Fine Gold to plan ahead, list out all the things that they're going to be wanting from us in the next, you know, and let us know in advance, because we don't like to have to make decisions on the fly, and I, this is like one of those things, so, um, this goes to what Chris was talking about, it, um, it would be great if you could go back to them one more time and say that the Permanent Town Building Committee and the Library Working Group and the trustees of the library are all concerned that there are additional services that keep popping up, and we need to know now if there's other things that need to be addressed. Um, because we're, because we're getting tired of it. It feels unprofessional, so.
I understand.
Um, my second comment is, um, on what Tom was saying. We often do, I usually ask the low voltage designer, i.e. BLW, to prepare a construction responsibility matrix to put into the set of documents that says, this is what, um, for all the low voltage items, security, AV, telephone, blah, blah, blah. This is what the contract, what the general contractor is supposed to furnish and/or install, uh, versus the library IT department owner versus the filed sub bidder, and that's you know, uh, an added problem in public bidding. We need to be sure that everybody in the construction end knows who is providing and who is installing. And so we always create this chart with Ps and Fs and Is and all these different things for every single line item, because, uh, we don't want finger pointing during construction, that the filed sub bidder says, I didn't own it.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's a problem, that's, I had started that Excel sheet, and that's probably the beginning seed of what they need to develop from the documents, I will, I will review that with them as well, because I agree, we, the whole point is not to have gaps.
Thank you.
Mike?
This made me think of one more item, um, we may need to ask the, um, engineers this question, but I was just thinking, the, the design being VRF on the mechanical system, that's gonna require building automation controls, which I'm assuming is in the scope of the project. Um, but I don't see anything in their scope of work listing all of the data drops necessary for the controllers that are gonna be required for the VRF. So there's gonna be head-end controllers that get spread out throughout the building that need IT drops and power drops. So I would like to request from the engineer to confirm that that necessary IT design is included, and also confirm if there's been a provision for the power and data on the construction documents, because those things are usually coordinated in the field. So it will probably be one of the notes, if you send the drawings out, I'll have some comments, but we should make sure they put a minimum of carry power to five locations, et cetera, based on what they're designing. Just, cause I've seen that, on, I'm on the construction side, that's a change order on almost every job. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that they get that design on the front end, so we can get those costs covered.
Yes, I will ask for that confirmation, but in all my conversations, I didn't hear exception to that, but I will ask, I will email them that and ask for the email confirmation, that's.
Sounds good, thanks.
Sure. That everybody's question, sorry to get so stuck, it's, you know, I realize it's nitty-gritty, but it is, everybody has concerns, because we've all, obviously had gaps and seen errors, so we're just trying to make sure that those are all stitched up.
And thank you for all your help with that.
No, just, yeah, I don't, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure it's airtight as well. Um, so I think that's me, I'm gonna tip it to Ellen.
So I'll just quickly report, uh, Fine Gold Alexander, uh, has been assisting with, um, items that the fire department requested, uh, prior to us being able to finalize a lease at five fifteen Gorton Road. Um, we did, uh, one walkthrough to take field measurements, um, one architect has been working on the furniture and collection stack layout plan with me on two different levels, um, um, one of the challenges which we will be, um, dealing with, with the Board of Library Trustees, as we look at operations and services, is that this building is a business B classification, which, um, Is that this building is a business B classification, which um, assumes an occupancy. Of a one hundred square feet per person. So we will not only have closed stacks, which we always knew, but. We will be looking at ways to do programming offsite and to continue with. Curbside pickup, one of our favorite things to provide service during COVID and other creative measures. So um, that's not necessarily a construction report, but that is a report on um, the. I don't want to say limitations. This is a beautiful building and it's going to be so much more wonderful than an old, um. You know, radiator heated school with rattly windows and bilious paint. So we're very happy to be there, but. Um, it will be changing, you know, the operations we can provide offsite. And so maybe, um, moving on to the town of Westford internal reviews, there. Are two separate pieces of correspondence we need to discuss, um, as well as. A watercolor rendering of, um. A request for support from both the Commission on Disability and from the Historic Commission. Um, our historic front entrance, um, is not. And never has been handicapped accessible and to uh, appeal for. A waiver from the Mass Architectural Access Board, we do want to re- request local support. So um, these would be, um, this would be correspondence from our chairs. Um, and um, we would be taking this to the next. Um, Commission on Disability Meeting and the Historical Commission Meeting and. Um, then I, I'll let you talk about the state of the application, Alicia. Um, there's a, a special application that CHA has been working on.
Yep. There's, yeah, there's an application we're requesting a variance that the. Front historic door, the door that faces Main Street is obviously you have to go up a staircase. That's a historic door. As it's up on the upper landing, it's not accessible. So we're asking for a variance that that door, so it will always be allowed to be an egress, so people inside can always exit for safety. But we're asking if we can continue the ingress there to be able to enter the building through that door. So we have to ask that. We have to go to the historic commission to town historic and commission on disability and also the state level. For approval to allow for that. So we're working on that. The application is filled out. We're, um, Ellen's teed up some meetings so that we commit with, can meet with Weston's. Commission on Disability and the Historic Commission to review the information with them so they can write letters of support. If they choose to support it, which I hope they do. Um, and so that we can put that behind the application when we apply to the state. So that's all, it, that. Is um, an ongoing effort. It will not impact construction or bidding or anything like that. That's a, it's a different. It's a parallel track, but not, they don't, one does not influence the other.
So Lynn, Lynn Clermont and Scott, I will, I will work on a non-draft version and um, coordinate with you. Of getting signatures and we, we can have, uh, you know, side conversations to work on that, getting that out. Uh, assuming that this is the will of, of both boards that we want to go in this direction. I know, maybe Jean, you can tell us, I, I think Roden Bush must have gotten this variance. I know that the, um, a handicapped accessible. Uh, door at Roden Bush is right around the corner from the front door.
I don't know what Don Mills did, um, if, and, and I think Alicia called me about that. Did you talk to Don Mills?
I did talk to Don Mills and sought his advice because I know he'd had success and I just said, you know, you'd had success, please let it's. You know, tell me about your, you know, share any lessons learned, talk through that with him. He was very kind. You know, spend some time on the phone with me. So that was very helpful. Yep.
And did he go through the variance process to get that or did he just jump over it?
He, he did a little bit. Yep. It was, it's slightly different there, but yes, he had to do that. The town hall also has the same situation where the front door is not handicap accessible.
But it's not always unlocked either.
It is unlocked during business hours.
Oh, okay.
But not in the evening for evening meetings.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay. And finally, uh, as we said earlier, the engineering report, everyone is working on that. Um, you know, there was a shared document, so. Um, we hope to have that for, uh, the sixteenth. I have to look at that again. So um, I'll let you explain the temporary space assessment, Alicia.
That, oh, I, I think I went through all that. The temporary space assessment was for Fine Gold Alexander for, for, um. The architects to go out and do to, they've gone out and. Uh, they have some floor plans. They're double checking that the floor plans as provided by the owner match. Measuring door widths, things like that, just to, to confirm. And as well as the fire protection engineer to go out and look at the um, sprinkler system and the. Electrical engineer to go out and review exit signs, things like that, to make sure that it's all, I, you know, according to Hoyle at the request of the fire department. So that was, uh, that's an additional service for ten thousand four hundred and ten dollars. And then also the low voltage, as discussed, for a total of thirty six thousand eight hundred and ten. And I think we'd look for a vote to accept those together.
Okay. Anything else or can we, can I have a motion to, um, approve?
Let's have one final question on the temp space.
Sure.
So this is them going in and doing like, not a full NFPA two forty one, but like a fire protection plan. Based on the business occupancy of existing versus assembly and what's needed for the library.
Correct. Right, that, that we're not, that we, there are no assembly spaces within that building.
Yep.
So what can we do? We're not, the library is not changing a single wall. We're working with the walls that are there. And the fire department rightly so wants to make sure is that sa- that space safe? And so we're just, the, uh, team is going in to make sure that that space is safe for the library to occupy. Does it meet the, the sprinkler requirements appropriate for those? Spaces and are the exit signs appropriate and things like that?
Okay. And if they find it's not, what's the next step? They produce a design or?
I, I would as, I imagine they'll note if there's something they take exception to and find that's not safe. Then the building owner would be required to make the modifications.
Okay.
To meet, to bring this building to standards. I, I don't believe that should be a project cost that to modify the space.
Okay.
Is this been done? Is this already been done or is it a to be done?
There, the engineers, the architect has already been onsite and the engineers will be onsite Friday and Monday. They couldn't, they couldn't schedule to be on the same day. I'm like, just get out there. Hurry, hurry up. So.
Is this the full cost, the ten thousand?
Yes, yes. That, they could not have, um, that was their, their. Basic services would have included for a tenant fit up for the, um, space. It did not include this kind of survey and report that was not known at the time. That that would be, because we did not, when they put their proposal together, we didn't know what space we would be going in and what the requirements would be.
I'm just gonna ask it.
Sure.
Are we paying for a service that hasn't happened yet?
That service has, has not happened yet, but it will be happening immediately, Friday and Monday.
I don't, I just, I just don't know what our, um, position is on paying ahead.
So you're not, you're not paying ahead. This is a proposal. I'm sorry. This additional service proposal. This is not an invoice.
Okay, got it. You're, you're approving in a proposal and a warrant will appear on another meeting.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions?
Then can I have a motion? To approve, um. Project, uh, a project item.
I do have. Can I just chime? Sorry to interrupt, but can I just chime in one second, Lynn, and just, uh, uh, regarding all this? So. Uh, I just had to get it out there because I, I'm getting a little confused on this one now because, uh, it seems like if, if there are spaces that the, that the building owner was going to modify. To, to provide the, the space as required. Um, I mean, how, how would they know that without having this, this, uh, study done first? I, uh.
And the.
And then, then the wiring part that goes into with the comms, it wouldn't, that, you know, that there are no comms available. I'm just. I'm just a little befuddled about some of that stuff that I, uh.
About the temporary space?
Would have all been vetted before we took this phase.
I think they've met everything that the RFP required, which. You know, came due the first week of September. And here we are in the middle of November. So they had a very thorough response to the RFP. This is a twenty-four-year-old building that is in excellent shape and has actually undergone all kinds of safety reviews. The only things that we would be adding besides our own furnishings and stacks in the basement floor. We would be bringing town fiber over from Westford Cat, which is the furthest link. And that would allow us again to maintain the town phone system and be on the town server with all of our computers. So this is not about inadequacies in the current building. And the building owner has actually indicated he would replace some carpeting and paint. It's about the fire department granting us, uh, an occupancy and a safety permit. So it's really about safety as opposed to a, uh, to the design and the layout of the building that we're looking at.
Is it like a pre-check before the fire department comes in? Is that?
It, it is, will be a report to the fire department.
Okay.
That everything is safe and compliant.
Okay.
Okay. So that being said, and I think that, that's great, but for future purposes, I think for projects like this, where we have to relocate. This is something that should be in the RFP upfront. Um, because it, it just doesn't make sense that we, we dive into all this stuff and find out at the very end that, you know what? The occupancy load of the, the stacks are fifty gross instead of a hundred net like business. And all of a sudden, it, it just changes the, you know, the amount of people that are running through the building and therefore things get a little off, you know? Just saying for future purposes, let's get this, uh.
It wasn't, it's not the. Loading, it's not the floor loading that's being brought into question. It's the occupancy loading.
And that's exactly what I just said.
Okay, let, let me just be very clear. Our use of the building is not going to change the building's classification. So the library, schools, Roden Bush, they are classified for assembly. And a person can take up seven square feet. This is a business B classified building and our use is not going to change the classification. But based on our furniture outlays, our, our closed stacks in the basement. Will not be allowing any public use whatsoever. So based on square footage and the plans. We're going to be told, maybe we can have forty-five to forty-nine people in this building at a time. And we will have to figure out how to meter that and how to provide services with those limitations. And the fire department was very clear that they wanted someone from the architect's firm to do the assessment. Not the builder to do the assessment. So I think, well. Okay, I'm the least qualified person to be weighing in about this here, but they made it clear they wanted this to be, you know, an advocate of the town. And that's no reflection at all on the owner. It's just, you know, it wasn't to be an owner provided assessment.
Right, okay. Just, I'm just saying that, that something like that, I think maybe. Before we're thinking next time or, or whatever, on any of these projects, where there's temp services required, that, you know, the occupant load is. Huge.
I, I think a real, um, a, a, a real lesson from this is. You know, if it's a public library, uh, you know, the real desire would be for a building with an assembly classification. So that you can have more congested use, um, of, of the building spaces.
Yeah.
But it's not like you had tons of responses cherry pick from Ellen. I think there's, it's, it's not, it's. We, there's not a whole lot in Westford and I know you wanted to stay in Westford, so that's part of the challenge too.
I, I will just say, no, you know, having spoken with the building consultants for the library commissioners and other librarians who've gone through this. You know, often people do end up in the old rattly school building or, you know, occasionally they end up. I think in Reading, they ended up where, uh, you know, frugal fannies had moved out. So occasionally, you know, there is a cheap. A flat retail space built on grade, but we didn't have any of those options. We basically had two responses. And one had no stack or storage area at all.
Do we have as built for this building? Because wouldn't those show the code review and all they have to do is look at them? We just don't have them? Is, is that the issue?
The town does not have them. I went.
Okay.
Down to the vault and look. And Nancy was kind enough to reach out to the original architect. So, um, no, the, the answer is unfortunately, we don't have those.
Okay, that makes more sense because I was, I was thinking out loud here, ten thousand's a lot of money to do a simple assessment. Um, but if there's no documents, I understand more times needed.
We have plan, we, we have floor plans. We don't have as built and we don't have the original. Building plans that were submitted in two thousand to the town. Uh, they were able to find the site plan, but not the building plan.
And they're very basic floor plans to, to that. Doesn't show any electrical, doesn't show anything. And doesn't, there's no way of knowing what was originally appro- like approved. And if they'd moved a single wall since then, there was no, there's no way of knowing.
So there isn't reliable documentation at all for the building.
Correct.
Correct. Anything else? Then can I have a motion to approve additional services? For temporary space occupancy and low voltage for a total of thirty six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars.
So moved.
I'll second it. So here's our voting. Clermont.
Aye.
Jerks eye, Fleckner, and Roach and Secor are not here. Teal.
Aye.
Book.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Kinski.
Aye.
Haddon.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Ziegowitz.
Aye.
Nine zero zero.
So upcoming meetings are the final thing. Um, at this point, um, we'll be asking for a continuation. For the planning board and the conservation commission and you see those dates highlighted in red. And, um, I'm confident the Commission on Disability will meet on the fourth. I'll be reaching out to the Historic Commission. Um, they did not, they weren't sure that they would meet in November. And I will be finding out if they're planning a meeting in December. Or if there might be a change to that date as we get closer to Christmas. So that's one of my action items after tonight.
And also somewhere in here, like I mentioned, because of the conflict with planning board on the sixteenth, well, Ellen and I will find a date to. To try and wedge something in there if we can before the holiday to review the and confirm the cost estimate.
Right. We don't know what time we are on the planning board, so, uh, although that will be an in-person meeting. But we'll see what we can do.
Anything else? If not, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Clermont.
Aye.
Jerks eye, Fleckner, Roach, Secor are not here. Teal. Am I here, Debbie?
Yeah, I am. I got, somehow I got bumped out, so I had to come back in.
All right, you're back.
Aye.
Isleton.
Aye.
Kinski.
Aye.
Haddon.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Ziegowitz.
Aye.
Nine zero zero and we adjourned at seven twenty-one.
Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you.